Welcome, everybody, to the Planning Commission meeting of Wednesday, November 12, 2025. I hope you will join us to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. May we have the roll call, please?
Present.
Commissioner Lindstrum?
Here.
Vice Chair Kristina Schorn?
Present.
Chair Row.
Here.
Okay, very good. So the first item on the agenda is the approval of the October 28, 2025 Planning Commission minutes. If Commissioners want to take a look and then if I may have a motion. Seeing none, I move that we approve the minutes.
I'll second.
Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I hope we can all see the results of the vote. We couldn't see the results of the vote. Oh, there it is. I guess you got to see the document stamp. All right, very good. So moving on, there's no postponements of the day. So the next item on the agenda is Oral Communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the Commission on any matter within the jurisdiction of the Commission and not on the agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. In most cases, state law will prohibit the Commission from making any decisions with respect to a matter not on the agenda. Madam City Clerk, do we have any oral comments?
We have one speaker in person, Chair Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Is the mic? Okay, there we go. Oh, yeah, I was here the first night. And, okay, good. Thank you. We're rolling. Anyway, hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin, longtime resident of Cupertino. And I just wanted to mention a couple of things tonight during oral. As you all are aware, I'm very, very concerned about SB 79, which was one of the Senator Weiner bills, which the governor just signed. And it would allow high rises within one half mile of transit corridors such as Stevens Creek Boulevard or El Camino. I have great reservations about this bill, as do a number of other people. And I understand there will be forthcoming lawsuits filed against the state for it. One of the things that is concerning to me is that it has been found out that the group called SPUR, which is a nonprofit that operates in San Francisco and San Jose, is promoting charter city reform. This is a danger signal, if there ever was one, because last year charter cities were able to have some immunity from bills such as SB 79. And I think it was one of the Senator Weiner bills from last year. There have been the charter cities, because they are different than general law cities, these are big cities like San Francisco, San Jose, LA, old cities, they're chartered. They have their own set of rules. And they have actually been protected from some of the Senator Weiner and other bills that have come down. But when I saw that SPUR in San Francisco is talking about charter city reform in San Francisco, that is a danger signal. That meant that this retrograde group is promoting, they are saying that charter cities limit housing. That's not true. That is a danger signal. Some of the groups are trying to force cities to change from charter cities. And to me, that's criminal. That is absolutely abhorrent. The other thing that is happening is that the California Chamber of Commerce, this is a state entity, has an initiative for November of 2026 where they are going to try to reform SEQA. They are not happy with what the governor did with Senator Weiner and Assemblymember Wick's awful bills that were used for the trailer bills to kill SEQA. This is what is happening. We need to keep our eyes open. It is dangerous. They want a totalitarian system. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time. Our next speaker is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, my name is Rhoda Frye, AKA Mom, once a mom, always a mom. And I've noticed that there are some bifurcs around town that are kind of look artsy. But the first thing I thought about when I saw them was that they looked like a child could be entrapped in them quite easily. If you consider building codes on stairs, for instance, the vertical elements have to be a certain width so a child cannot get entrapped in them. And so today I dropped by the building department and I asked about whether these had been vetted prior to being installed. And the answer was no, and it apparently is not in their purview. However, I think it would be good for the city to do some due diligence prior to moving forward with these before we install anymore, because we don't want kids to be entrapped in these things and we don't want to put the city at risk as well. And, you know, that also brings to light something else is that when I, you know, we've got a really great building department. These guys are very sharp. And they look at developer projects and, you know, single-family home projects, et cetera. But when it comes to city projects, those are happening on their own. So anytime we have a city project, building department's not involved, they don't vet it. And time and time and dime again, I've seen ADA violations over and over. In fact, right here, these doors here, we didn't have the doors, the automatic doors coming in here when this place was built. There was issues with the library, there was issues with the sports center, the list goes on. And of course, I've lived in Cupertino for over 40 years and I've seen it over and over again. And maybe if we could engage the building department in our city projects, then we wouldn't have these problems. And I am concerned about kiddos getting trapped. So I hope we can do something about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. We have no speakers in person and no speakers on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. With that, we will close Oral Communications. Thank you to the members of the public that spoke. We are going to move on to public hearings. Agenda item two is the consideration of a new residential development project consisting of 55 townhome condo units and 10 ADUs housed within 10 three-story buildings on three contiguous parcels totaling 2.72 acres located on the south side of Stevens Creek Boulevard at the present location of the Idlewood Shopping Center United Furniture. And so with that, do we have a staff report?
Yes, excuse me, Chair. This is probably a good time to ask to see if there's any ex parte communications.
Atene Wu, are you muted?
Oh, I'm sorry. I muted myself. So before staff makes their presentation, perhaps you can ask whether any commissioners...
Thank you, Atene Wu. I'm glad we were able to get you to speak up early in the meeting and make sure you're engaged. If we may have ex parte communications from Commissioners. Anyone like to go first?
Yes, I met with the developer and I've spoken with a few of the residents that live nearby.
Okay, I did meet with the developer and I had a chance to drive by the neighborhood and met with a few residents and also had a chance to ask staff a few questions. And thank you to staff for being able to accommodate my questions. And I think that's about it. Anyone else?
Yeah, I did meet with one resident over on East Estates, but not with the developer.
Okay, very good. So with that, let's get this rolling. If we have a staff report?
Yes, thank you, Chair and members of the Commission. Jean Martyr will be making the lead staff report. I just wanted to have a few comments before we get started. As a reminder, this is a housing element site that we're going to be talking about tonight, though the application for the project was submitted under SB 330 before our housing element was certified. So we're looking at a project that differs fairly considerably from what the housing element anticipated in terms of the number of units. This is a townhome project around 20 units per acre. This was upzoned significantly where the housing element had anticipated over 160 units. So I just want to get that clear, if anybody that's aware of a housing element site, why we're talking about the project we are. This was submitted appropriately ahead of the housing element certification in 2024. I also wanted to note as well, because we are aware of some issues that have come up about the existing environmental conditions on the site, that while John and I are here as staff, we do have two members of Placeworks, Terry McCracken and Vivian Kha, who have worked on the environmental documents for that, they're attending on Zoom. So as anticipated, when we get to discussing that portion of the project, that they are available and can go into much more detail, I think, than we can. So just wanted to get those things out there. And also, the developer's team is here, so I think John's presentation may be a little more brief than usual, so we're not overlapping and the developer can cover their own project. So with that, I will turn it over to John.
Thank you. Thank you, Luke. Good evening. John Martyr, Senior Planner with the City Cupertino's Community Development Department. Yes, I will be presenting a very brief presentation on this project that came in this summer of 2024. No need to read the subject matter again, just to reiterate that the applicant is Toll Brothers, represented by Nick Cosla, as well as his team that are present in the chambers. A little bit of background, this is the Idlewood Shopping Center, which is, you know, from what I hear is the official name of the area or of the retail center. But commonly, at least amongst staff, we just call it United Furniture Site. So which is, so if you see the title of the project has two names, that's the reason why. Again, the background is about 2.6 acres net and is built out from what we can find in 1960. The anchor tenant, of course, is United Furniture, at least was. There's about seven other smaller units on site. The last business to leave, I believe, was the falafel restaurant that was there on the corner along Stevens Creek Boulevard. And it is within the heart of the city's specific plan. So the applications that were submitted, so first, as Luke had acknowledged, that this is a housing element site that had a minimum density of 65 dwelling units an acre with a maximum of 80 dwelling units an acre. This site was rezoned in July 2024 with the housing element certified, I believe, in September of 2024 that year. So with SB 330, as we've seen a number of times within the last couple of years, developers submitted SB 330 pre-applications prior to housing element adoption to lock in the lower densities. In this case, the application was submitted in February 2024, in which they had 180 days to submit a formal applications to continue locking in those pre-housing element development standards as well as fees. So in this case, they locked in a 25 dwelling units acre as well as other adjusted standards in the housing, I'm sorry, in the heart of the city's specific plan, as well as zoning ordinance in general plan at that time. A development application was submitted July 31, 2024. So a little bit about what they're requesting. That title's incorrect. It is a 55-unit townhome project. 10 of those units will have an ADU. 11 of those units will be below marker rate with six being median income, which is about 100%, 120% AMI. And five would be moderate income, which is about 80% to 100% AMI. AMI is the average median income for Santa Clara County in this case. So if you see the site plan on the right side of the slide, you can see how the street grid and whatnot. One of the things to notice about this site plan is that there's about four to five driveways currently at the site, two off of Stevens Creek, and I believe the other two to three are off East Estates as well as Richwood Drive. This will be reduced down to one driveway off East Estates with no driveways off Richwood or Stevens Creek Boulevard any longer. The resulting density is below what would have been allowed pre-housing element, which is the 20, it was around 20.5 to dwelling units acre. The townhome condominiums are split up into 10 three-story buildings that range with units between 2,000, 20,000 to 2,500 square feet, which is inclusive of of garage space as well. This project does qualify for density bonus. So a few of the waivers, I'll go through really quickly. The side setbacks on the western side, right adjacent to the marketplace shopping center, the required is about 20 feet 8 inches. They are proposing 10 feet. The rear setback, which is Richwood Drive, the required is 62 feet 2 inches and the proposed is nine feet to the building face. Building form, so in the heart of the city and I believe as well as in the general plan, if you are along Stevens Creek Boulevard and you are developing, excuse me, adjacent to an already developed residential development, in this case, a single-family home, there is one parcel that directly abuts it. You have to terrace the building. So it's for every foot high that the building is, has to be 1.5 feet away, yeah, 1.5 feet away from that property line. And so that's the third waiver. And lock coverage, so the required lock coverage is, maximum lock coverage is 40%. They're proposing 43%. Elimination of the retail requirement as well as certain design standards for common landscaping in open space. It's a density bonus parking reduction. So density bonus laws allow certain thresholds for parking requirements depending upon the amount of bedrooms per unit. In this case, you have one parking space per studio, two, from studio to one bedroom, one space, one and a half for two to three bedrooms, and two and a half parking spaces for four or more bedroom units. So all in all, the requirement for this site would be 118 spaces. And what the developer's proposing is two enclosed spaces per unit with nine additional spaces unenclosed or for a grand total of 119 spaces. And I do want to acknowledge, besides the housing element with AB 2097, because of this vicinity to a high transit corridor and high transit stop, the developer would not be, the city could not require any parking spaces at all for this location. This is the architectural design from a perspective along Stevens Creek Boulevard. The trees are not invisible, but they just are, they're just, you know, they're kind of obscured a little bit to give a sense of what those buildings will look like along Stevens Creek Boulevard. And no, the developer is going to maintain all the street trees in the public right of way, as well as adding their own along the right of both the East Estates as well as Richwood and adding new street trees along those streets as well. I'll let the developer make the, go more into more of the design during their presentation. Environmental review, as Luke had mentioned about this being a categorical exemption based on infill development, even with the known dry cleaning remediation issues on site, we do have placeworks available to speak remotely on that issue if there are further questions. If you do notice, too, I don't recall you bringing this up, but we do have a desk item on here for each Commissioner as well as in the lobby. We did, our consultant placeworks did strengthen a portion of the notice of exemption that regarding as to the rationale for this being still considered exempt, even though there is dry cleaning remediation required, actually occurring right now for at least the last two or three years. And, you know, I'll allow placeworks to explain what those modifications are and why they were deemed to be, why we needed to strengthen that part of the notice of exemption. Specifically, it's Section 4.3, if you're curious. I will say the appendices were not printed out with you guys, just because those would be like 800 pages and I didn't feel like wasting paper for that. But if so, we will, by the time this goes to council next month, all that will be updated in the council agenda packet. One modification as it relates to environmental remediation is for condition number seven in the draft development permit resolution. Staff did work closely with the county's Department of Environmental Health on an appropriate condition of approval that would tie issuance of building and grading permits to this site based upon the accessible levels of ground, cleanup based upon the acceptable levels for residential development on site. So basically, the big change was the, if you look at the crossed out section right there, that was removed by the Department of Environmental Health and they added the underlying section where it says, "Or submit a long-term mitigation monitoring plan approved by the department." Okay, the recommended action is that the Plan Commission recommend the city council that the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, as well as approving the following permits. The next step is that the Plan Commission's recommendation will be forwarded to city council on December 16 for its decision on the project. City council's decision will be final unless reconsidered by the council within 10 days of their decision. If the project is approved, the applicant may apply for building permits at the time, subject to approval of DEH. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Jean. Did we want to take the applicant presentation now or does the applicant have a presentation?
They do. Chair, I do believe it's time for Commission questions or is that out of order?
We're happy to take Commission questions. Just wanted to see if the applicant wanted to present now or later.
Personally, I think it would make sense to have the applicant presentation now to just sort of flow from staff to the applicant.
Yeah, we're welcome hearing from the applicant now, if you'd like to.
Going to hold this up. Can you guys hear me okay? Jean, do you have the presentation you can kind of...
I do. I'm just trying to figure out how to make it big. There we go. But I think it's good enough. Does that work, Nick?
Good? Yeah. Great, thank you. Chair Row, Vice Chair Kostel Chron, and members of the Commission. My name is Nick Cosla with Toll Brothers. Joined here with me today is Rob Connolly, also with Toll Brothers. And we've got our distinguished consultant team here. We've got our landscape architect, civil architect, our environmental consultant, civil engineer. So we've got the whole team here. So any questions that you have, we're looking forward to hearing them. We also have some folks on Zoom. So we think we have the team here to answer any questions you might have. And just quick thanks to staff, you know, we've been working on this for probably two years now. And I think two years before that, we were negotiating with the owner. So it's taken us four years to get to today, but I'd say the process has been, you know, as smooth as it is in, better than most cities. So we appreciate all the work that your staff has done. Next slide, please. So I just want to tell you a little bit about Toll Brothers. I think I got like 10 minutes, something like that, nine minutes now. So Toll Brothers, we've never done a project in your city before. And so we tried to bring, I mean, this is our A-plus work. Toll Brothers is active and it says 24 states, but we're actually active in 26 states. We have a bunch of offices here in California. Our office that in the Bay Area is in Pleasanton, California, just up 680. And we build about 300 to 500 units a year just in the Bay Area. Next slide. So Toll Brothers is very particular about the cities that we work in. We try to go to environments either that we've done work in before, you know, so we're used to staff, we're used to the planning commission, city councils, and always hoping for repeat business. So we're very active right now in Los Gatos, Santa Clara, Sunnyvale, we've done a lot recently, Pleasanton, we have a project in Pacifica of all places, also Santa Cruz. But, you know, a lot of our core business is the peninsula and South Bay Area, and that's just kind of what the map shows you. Next slide, please. So here's the project site. I think most folks are, know where it's at. It's on Stevens Creek Boulevard. Next slide. And here's the site plan. I just want to give you maybe some quick history. So when we originally had started working with staff on this project, the zoning was up to 25 dwelling units per acre. And at that time, you didn't have a certified housing element. So Toll Brothers had the option, for lack of a better word, to go in with a builder's remedy application. Since we're the new folks in town, we didn't want to go that direction, just because I know I was on the city council once and I didn't like when people tried to shove things down our throat. So we went with the route of using SB 330 and builder and density bonus law to achieve this project. And we had looked at what you were, the density that the city was looking at at the site. And we just thought, you know, if there's some neighbors in here, I don't know if they're in opposition or support of the project, but, you know, we thought proposing 160-unit building, which would be probably about 80 feet, so twice the height, on this site would probably be something that the neighborhood would have some difficulties with. So we tried to make a site that was, we thought, complimentary to the neighborhood. I mean, obviously denser than what's there currently, but not as dense as what's kind of going on the other. So we thought, let's just feather in to this community with, you know, there's some height. It's not 80 feet, but there's, you know, it's around 40, 45 feet. And in order to get a little bit more density, we added accessory dwelling units. We were able to fit 10 dwelling, accessory dwellings into the project, which we can kind of look at what those floor plans and who those would serve. So, you know, it's 55 units, but you're really getting an extra 10 units, so closer to 65 if you include those studios. Next slide, please. And yeah, here's, so here's the site plan. The, I think it's the, my eyesight's not what it used to be, but the pink dots are where we've included our inclusionary units. We have 11 below-market-rate units spread throughout the site. And again, we did our best to try to make sure they weren't all concentrated in one area. So we spread them throughout the site. And our accessory dwelling units, which our architect did a fantastic job creating this whole concept, are embedded within certain of the units. Next slide, please. There we go. So we have two to four-bedroom units. This is our smallest unit, which is called a carriage unit. We have all side-by-side garages in all of the units versus like a tandem, because what we found is that when you do a tandem garage, I think everyone knows what that is, right? A car in front of a car. People just use the back of that tandem unit for storage. And we don't have folks actually using their parking spaces. So we were very cognizant of the fact that let's get people into units that are actually going to use the parking within the houses versus, you know, people just parking all over the street. And we have an HOA that controls that to make sure that people are using their garages for parking. This is our smallest unit. This is around, what is it, 1,400 square feet? And we can just flip through these real quick. And then Unit 2, this is our ADU unit. So if you look at bottom right hand on my screen, so we've got, the ADU has a separate door versus the main unit's front door. And inside it, we're able to fit a nice little kitchenette. It's got a bathroom, it's got, you know, a bedroom. They're, we're trying to figure out a way to get a washer and dryer in there. And they're just, they're tight spaces, right? Especially dwelling unit. We found, I mean, in Europe, it's very common to have that standalone washer and dryer all in one. So we're working with a company right now to figure out, you know, how can, again, in most cities in Europe and also in San Francisco, those are kind of common. But because these are tight ADUs, just finding out the spacing for it. And we've spent years trying to make these as user-friendly as possible. And we think, well, we don't know. We think a lot of the buyer of the primary unit, they can either buy the unit for, let's say, $3 million, I don't know what the number is, but then they can offset their mortgage with the ADU rent. There's a new law that passed where you can do that. So we're trying to create opportunities for people to make buying a unit in Cupertino a little bit more affordable, if you could team up with someone to buy it. So we have 10 of them. So we don't know if it's going to be, three of those will go to that type of person, maybe none of them. We think it's also great if you're, you know, if you have grandparents or your students, I have a daughter in college, I expect she's going to live with me for the next 10 years when she get, hopefully she graduates. So it comes for that, for that. We also heard people who have children who might have developmental issues that might be living with their family for a long time, that could be a good standalone living unit for those folks, and especially, you know, we think grandparents or people who are going to come visit for a long time. So we're building these right now in Milpitas and they are selling like hotcakes. And we think it's a real good solution to adding some of that density that you might have been losing with the housing element. Next slide. This is Unit 3. Again, this gets into kind of our larger units up to our Unit 4, which, you know, this is our four-bedroom, three-and-a-half-bath, 2,300-square-foot units. This is our biggest one. Next slide. Here's the elevations. Our architect loves talking glowingly about her architecture, so she can tell you, I mean, what we tried to do again was bring the best project we could to your city. So these are the most expensive materials, the most expensive garage doors, the most expensive railings we can do. We think it pops, we think it's, and we drive by to get here, if you go by the Apple Campus, you know, the glass, Navidea site we drive, which I know isn't here, just bringing that Silicon Valley feel into the neighborhood, which I think... feel into the neighborhood, which I think you're probably going to see a lot more of this type of architecture along Stevens Creek. You know, that contemporary, that modern, but that's still that open feel with the balconies and the rooftop decks to make it just, just breathe real nice. Next slide. This is my final slide. I know you guys probably have a lot of questions. So this is in the, this is kind of the core of the project. This is our, you know, we have a courtyard, kind of an open space area. If you look at our network of trails, all of the trails lead to this central spine of the project where we hope there'll be a lot of community gathering. This is where people would have, you know, the birthday parties. You get off work, you come meet here for wine in the morning, maybe you get there for coffee or whatever it is. We think that this will be a nice little, a little hub to, you know, it's only, it's only 55 units, not a lot of people, but we think this, this would be good to accommodate that community feel. So that's my presentation and I'm welcome to take any questions now, later, if, just questions for staff.
Thank you, Nick. I think we will start with questions for staff. So feel free to take your seat. I think we'll, we'll work our way through to questions to you eventually.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we will open it up to commissioners for any clarifying questions to staff. If, if anyone has clarifying questions? Anyone want to start first? No clarifying questions?
Yes, I wanted to ask a little, there's been a lot of community concern about the PCE. And I wanted to understand, in the, the SEQA report, there, it did not include the latest communications on geotracker with, with the Santa Clara County DEH. So the, the latest communication that I had read did say that, you know, current concentrations of PCE beneath the site exceed the environmental screening level for both commercial and residential land uses by one to two orders of magnitude and continue to represent a risk for vapor intrusion. So is there a reason why that wasn't included in the SEQA report?
Sure. I mean, so this was, the final draft was right before that letter was issued. Doesn't the, we can update the report by time it goes to council with that added reference to the letter. In fact, I think Placex already has, if I'm not, if I'm not misunderstanding. It's, regardless of the letters that are included, it still doesn't change the determination of the, of, the SEQA determination for infill exemption.
And is there a reason why we, so I, I think briefly came upon the screen, the revision to the use permit? Is there a reason why that clause, I think it was number seven, wouldn't be included in some of the other resolutions as well?
It's, it's really a matter of redundancy, you know? So this is more for a development permit. So I mean, it could be any of the resolutions, but I think the development permit is the main resolution that guides the, the other divisions, departments, and outside agencies, conditions of approval as well. Like an ASA resolution wouldn't really have this, because it's more focused on design or any type of design changes. And of course, there are still certain conditions, like condition number one about accuracy of plan sets that have to be in all of them, just to ensure that the, the approvals are internally consistent. But, you know, this is, you know, the, the DP resolution is the one that's going to be guiding over the findings for SEQA and whatnot.
Okay, thank you.
And, and just as a point of clarification, I did read the SEQA report and I thought the letter that was referenced was linked in the report. And there was a description of the timeline of events that led up to, I think, the upcoming two rebound test intervals. So I believe if, if I'm not mistaken, somewhere between page 10 and page 30 of the SEQA report, the reference letter is hyperlinked, so one should be able to click on that and access or at least see the timeline and chronology of events. Okay, very good. So other commissioner question, I guess we, we don't, we don't write in, but I was just going to make one very quick clarifying comment, just because we have a lot of members of the public attending. So I just want to reiterate what I think staff said and what I heard the applicant say as well, which is, this site is currently zoned at 65 unit to 80 unit per acre. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay. And this is about a 2.7 acre lot?
2.6 net, yes.
Okay. So not doing the math here on the fly, but that is about 80, that's easily about 200 units at least without the density bonus?
Correct.
And you throw on what, 50% density bonus?
Well, depending on affordability of the, of the units.
Okay. So this site could be up to 300 units as per current zoning. Is that right?
And no parking.
And you're getting ahead of me.
Sorry.
So, so just to clarify for those from the neighborhood and other residents that are here, we have a site that is currently zoned to allow for up to 300 units as, as allowed on that site and up to seven floors?
It's 70 feet. R4 zoning 70 feet, even without density bonus. So density bonus, you could exceed 70. But R4 is 70 feet. The housing element anticipated 163 total units, but you're correct. It could have been much more than that.
Okay. How high could you go with the density bonus?
Depending on the levels of affordability. There could be literally no cap, depending on the project.
Okay. So, so just to clarify for all of the residents that are here, you know, we are talking about choices and what is the choice? The neighborhood would like to see, what the community would like to see, how we would like to see it. And, and those choices are basically, if this application moves ahead, we have the project that we do, which is 55-unit townhomes. If this project does not move ahead, state law prohibits us from downzoning the site. Is that right?
That is correct.
And so any change in this project site would mean that you have to build a minimum of 80, 65 units per, per, per acre on the site. So just want to set that context. And then the other part was the parking. So I want to, I think, I think staff mentioned AB 2097. What is the criteria? I thought the criteria for AB 2097 was intersecting routes at 15-minute intervals?
Correct, correct. Yeah, within a half mile.
And do we have that at this location?
We do.
What would that location be?
A multiple. So it, between, I want to say between De Enza College and the Santa Clara border, all of Stevens Creek Boulevard is pretty much within that threshold.
I see. So the routes on Stevens Creek would qualify as some 15-minute interval, some part of the day?
Yes.
Presumably peak hours. Okay. Okay. And so just to clarify again, that means a future replacement application could potentially get away with no parking at this location? Okay. All right, very good. Just wanted to clarify that. And then to, to expand on this a little bit, is the, is the consultant going to present anything to us? I know there's been a lot of SEQA-related topic questions.
No presentation, but she's, but they are willing to answer any questions you might have as it relates to the notice of exemption, the process of, of infill.
Okay. I'll pause that and let our other commissioners get in with their questions.
Great, thank you. That was, that was a good summary. I just want to add to that also, I think as the, as the applicant mentioned, they could have chosen to go with a builder's remedy project because we had not, we did not have an approved housing element at the time. And at that point, all bets would be off and they wouldn't even be looking at, you know, 65 to 80. They could do whatever they wanted. So that's something else to, to consider. So I did want to ask a question because that seems to, you know, we've all gotten a lot of emails about this. So can you, is there any scenario under which this housing element would be built on top of toxic PCE contamination?
Actually built? No. Having, you know, I guess to clarify for people here, this is a development entitlement. This is really the first stage. This does not grant a grading permit to do site work. This does not issue a building permit. All of those are subsequent. The way this condition is currently drafted, yes, it is categorically exempt from SEQA under class 32 for infill development. But the oversight agency is the County Department of Environmental Health, who's already working on remediation on this site. I believe there's two extraction wells currently there, so you have a cleaning process underway. They are the oversight agency for that piece of the cleanup. And all permits that would actually allow work to occur on the site are going to be subject to their issuance, that they're satisfied that the site is adequately cleaned and/or being monitored into the future. So it's conceivable in projects like this, where this is very common, where you could get an entitlement and then have some time pass, a year, two years, five years, where until the cleanup thresholds are met, only then can we, as the city, issue grading or building permits. So if the entitlement goes forward in the next month or two with council approval, that does not enable site work to occur until the county is satisfied. And again, they are the oversight agency, not Cal EPA or Department of Toxic Substances Control or the Regional Water Quality Board, which is also an indication that if the toxins or the environmental cleanup are more serious, either of those two agencies would be the lead on the cleanup, not the county.
Okay. So just to summarize that, there is no scenario under which any building would be built where people could live where, before this contamination is cleaned up?
Correct.
Even if we approve it today, even if the council approves it, nothing is going to get built on there until the contamination is cleared up?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. The second question I had was, it's state law that single-family homes and multifamily homes of up to three stories have to provide solar or, or, you know, possibility of solar and EV hookups in their garages? And I didn't see that in any of the plans, so I just wanted to ask a question about that, either from you or the, or the applicant, if you could clarify if that's going to be provided?
Commissioner, thank you for the question. Yeah, so we're, we're right now, it's funny you say that, because we're, so there will be solar on the entire project. The big question for us becomes, do, does our home buyer prefer to lease it or to own it? So we will, per state law, we're going to plum for solar. Right now, our architect's actually working on where exactly the solar is going to go to meet the state requirement. And then for Toll Brothers and for our buyers, it's just, would you rather have a lease program or a sale? There's pros and cons to each, just because the price of solar has gone dramatically up. So we'll be solar. And then same thing for the EV, for the car chargers. So all the garages we'll have will be plumbed for a car charger. But then it just depends if you have a Rivian or a Tesla or a Chevy Volt, what specific car charger the, the customer, you know, our home buyers want, will, they will decide what type of charger they get. But yes, they will have car charging and PB. Yep. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Lidskog. Other questions at a clarifying level from other commissioners? Vice Chair?
I had another follow-up question on the remediation. So the idea that the site would be fully remediated for contamination, does that mean that it would then have a vapor intrusion mitigation system installed? Or would the, would it actually be fully remediated?
I think you would have the option. It's going to be to the county's satisfaction. There are sites where you have the vapor intrusion layers and you have monitoring going on for, you know, a defined period of time where you're doing testing to ensure that you're not going to get any seepage that could get up into the living area, or in some cases, you completely remove the contaminant. In either case, you're going to have the county overseeing that and it's going to have to meet whatever threshold they define. So it, it could be either of those two. Those are the most common methods.
And if it was the VIM system, would the residents be notified before they purchase?
I would be sure, yes, that you're having some, an existing condition like that on site.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Other questions from commissioners? So I had a couple of more clarifying questions. So in the renderings, I saw that the trees were new trees on the, on the street frontage on the Stevens Creek Boulevard side. However, there are existing mature trees there. Is there a reason that these mature trees are being taken down and replaced?
No, the street trees on Stevens Creek are being maintained.
Okay. And can the applicant confirm that? Because I have heard discussion about the fire department requiring changes in the street trees.
Yeah, if I, if I, yeah, so the, the existing street trees are staying, but we're also planting landscape, another row of trees in addition to those trees. So there'll be your existing street trees, but then we're also planting on the other side of the sidewalk, another row of trees. So it, it's kind of overkill to your, maybe to your point, but it's, I think it'll look...
Additional trees are never overkill, so.
I think, yeah, I think, I think it'll look fantastic.
Wonderful. And so just want to confirm, there's no removal of trees planned, is there, on this?
There's zero trees out there now. We have, there's, I think, the only trees that are out there now between us and there's a, I think you got a letter of support from our commercial neighbor, they have probably 40, I'm going to say, very mature trees that are separating the two properties. All of those will remain. And then we're planting an additional, I think, 80 trees on the site. So it's going to be a lot more green than it is now.
Through the chair, Nick, can you clarify? I think the chair was referring to maybe possibly on East Estates and Richwood. Will there be a removal, replacement of those street trees?
My landscape architect is saying yes.
Okay. Can we know why those trees are being replaced?
I believe because Public Works told us to.
And do we know why?
Either the, the change of species or I, I believe as well as the, the health of the, of the trees. If, if the landscape architect has further information about that, I'll defer to him.
This is Roman. He's great.
I don't know if I can live up to that. Yes, to answer your question, Public Works asked that those trees be removed due to several factors, one being the health of the trees and a different species of trees based on the street tree criteria. There's new street tree criteria based on species. And then I also want to clarify for the second row of trees on Stevens Creek, that's part of the heart of the city specific plan. So those trees are a triangulated pattern as much as possible, given the, the fact that the existing street trees will stay. So that's why there's a second row.
And can you clarify what type of trees are going to be replacing the existing mature trees? Because that is an area with very sparse tree coverage right now. The canopy on that side is fairly far spread apart. And so I'm concerned about losing mature trees and then starting over again. That sets us back by possibly years.
I'd have to check, but I believe they're colaterias, but I'll have to check.
And to the staff, is this a policy that the city has that if the existing street trees do not meet current preferred street trees, we are asking for replacement? We have several other projects happening on Stevens Creek.
More based on the health of the trees as well. A lot of these trees, street trees are planted in a way where they didn't have a lot of root base, either the, the roots cannot expand or they're over-concreted. Like if you look on Ridgewood and East Estates, I believe, you see a lot of pushing up on the sidewalks and whatnot. So they weren't planted, planted according to good forest, urban forest standards. So in this case, you know, these trees will be removed. And then when the developer redoes the sidewalk and the street frontage along that area, they're going to accommodate better urban forestry standards to, to ensure, you know, or minimize the amount of push-up on the sidewalks as well as a healthy root growth.
Very good. And would you like to comment on what kind of trees the property will be adding? We want to make sure that the canopy is going to be sufficiently green enough for, for our new projects. I know we have had a few projects that chose to do certain types of trees that really did not provide the greenery we would have liked to see, replacing in particular oak trees in the past. So would you comment on what kind of trees these net new trees would be?
Are you referring to the street trees or streets, or trees within the, the project itself?
You, you might comment on both.
Well, we have a, we have a variety of trees that we're proposing. Some are our native California species, but it's based on climate. And in certain conditions, we have a lot of shade on one side of the building. So we have a certain amount of trees that we would tolerate shade conditions. And then we provide some trees that would tolerate more sun. So it's a variety of deciduous evergreen, a few native California species. But given the, the site itself, a lot of the California native species just get way too big for that particular situation. But we do the best we can and try and propose as, as many as possible.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good. Go ahead.
Since you're up there, I did want to clarify. So on the subject of Fire Engine Access, on the vesting tentative map, there is a diagram page that shows ladders and maximum tree heights, so is, and, and that is also a page that does not have street trees. So is that, is that page not relevant to this discussion, and we, you've decided that the, you know, the outside street trees closest to the road can stay irrespective of height?
Let me see if I got that question correct. It's, are you questioning whether the, the proposed trees will not interfere with the, the ladders?
Yeah, there's just a diagram that shows the ladder and the maximum height of trees.
Right.
And I suppose that what you've proposed in the plan is, is in accordance with that.
Yeah, so we've, we've coordinated with Fire on the types of trees, along with what is being proposed as a new street tree, to make sure that none of those trees impact any type of fire ladder access. But also, there are ladder pads, which are the location where they establish those ladders if they need to. The trees that we're proposing do not impact those ladder pads. So we've, there's a couple of ways to look at that, that we've kind of worked that out with Fire, and they've been accepted of that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we have quite a few members of the public, so at this time, I think we should, out of respect for the public that are here, open it up for public comments, hear from members of the public, and then we'd have another round of clarifying questions for staff and the applicant. At this time, if there are members of the public that have not submitted a comment card, but would like to speak, you should find comment cards hopefully by the podium or outside in the lobby. So if you have not filled in a comment card, feel free to do so. You have a few minutes to get your comment cards in. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments for this item?
Yes, we have eight speakers in person. Our first speaker is Jennifer Griffin, followed by Henry Choi, followed by Pamela Hershey. Welcome, Jennifer.
I believe Pam, you're giving her time to me, but that's all right. I believe Pam Hershey indicated to me that she's going to yield her time, is that her question had been answered? I don't know the protocol for that. In all the 25 years I've come here, I've never had time yielded to me, so.
Yes, I believe you.
Pam need to come up, or?
No, I think she should be fine, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. First of all, let me commend the staff and the builders for all the hard work that they have done.
Sorry, I'm, I'm going to have to pause you. I think the member of the public yielded time to the speaker, so do we want to double the time for the speaker?
Yes, it should be six minutes.
So it should be six minutes?
Thank you. I'm so flattered, someone yielded time to me. They really like me.
Okay.
Thank you. Whoops, oh, we're not, okay, we're good to go. Yes, I'll just start out and say thanks to the staff and to the developer for all the hard work to make sure that this project exceeds Cupertino's expectations. I have been very, very critical in the past of the housing bills, as you know, and we are kind of like, we've got all these eggs in one basket, we have to make the best of it. So I think that the, I, I appreciate the fact that Heart of the City is being respected in this development. I appreciate that there will be two rows of trees. Now we're down to 2 minutes and 35 seconds, so how did that happen? Okay, you can, you can cut off 20 seconds if you want to. Okay, here we go. Anyway, I'm glad that we've got two rows of trees, that's very, very nice. I, I hope that we're going to have a lot of green leaf here, because Heart of the City is something that is uniquely Cupertino. Lots of people have worked very, very hard to make sure that this corridor in Cupertino has its look and feel, and I'm very proud. I have spent 25 to 26 years of my life in this city, working on Heart of the City, and I hope, I'm glad to see that it's respected. I had a few other questions. The, the situation with the ADUs, I know that some of the, I think there are 10 units of the main townhouses that are going to become available for restricted income. How does that work when they have an ADU on that project? I, I don't think it's appropriate that if the owner is getting the unit and is income restricted, he should not be allowed to rent the ADU at full market rate. This is going to need to be monitored. You don't get it both ways. So if the, if the owner is coming in under income restricted, the city needs to make sure that that ADU is rented in an affordable manner. Maybe the city, city needs to take, that the ADUs probably should be deed restricted on these units to make sure that no one, I don't want them to become Airbnbs. We don't want people, there's a lot of people in this city that need affordable housing, but I don't want anybody to get a free ride and take advantage just because they have restricted income, that they get to rent that ADU out for $2,500 a month. It doesn't work like that. So I, I haven't heard anybody talking about this situation, but they are below-market rate units, and we need to, I mean, frankly, I think it would have been better use if the developer had not used the ADUs and had put in another five to six townhouses. They would have made more profit, probably. I, I think this is a poor use of the ADUs on this type of project. The other thing is too, I will say, these units are four stories, you need to have elevators available. I have gout, I cannot walk up, I can bear, my husband had to drop me off tonight because my gout's been acting up. I cannot walk up a staircase. You are having people that are purchasing these properties with multi-generations in them. I have a 93-year-old mother, she can walk up one staircase. My mother-in-law is 90, she cannot get down out of her chair. So think very, very much about putting in elevators in some of these four stories. That is a lot of staircases. What if you're pregnant? What if you've broken your leg? You have little children? No one has discussed the school districts, how many children are coming out of these units? I know someone's going to say we can't talk about that, but we need to know for planning purposes, are these kids going to be going to which elementary, et cetera, et cetera? And please, no bright red and yellow colors, that is very disharmonious, and it is a distraction if you're driving down Stevens Creek Boulevard. I'm very concerned about the loss of retail. Also, we need to have these plans available to the public. I know we have that dumb rule where people can't, the public can't see the drawings, but we need to have some of that available before we go to city council. And also, the parking spaces, I don't want these residents parking all over the neighborhood, we need more parking. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, that is your time. Our next speaker is Henry Choi, followed by Jeff Shavea, followed by Nick Cosla. Welcome, Henry.
Good evening. I'm a resident of the Richwood Drive neighborhood. Several of us are here tonight. We actually had a huddle, a few huddles, for coming here. I am going to be speaking on the parking concerns, which is pretty obvious. The, combined, the Richard Drive and the East Estates Drive, as you've been there, is about 60 households, and each household is allowed about two cars. So this 55 units plus 10 ADU will spill over about the same number of cars on the, on the street. Spill over parking is a real concern, as you can appreciate. So our ask on parking is pretty simple, after huddling. We ask, one, that the developer increase the number of parking from currently 2.15 to three per household. And two, we ask that we put a physical barrier from the East Estates side onto the Richard or the, the other side of the East Estates. Put a physical barrier so it, so that it'll be, cars cannot directly drive from the new development into the neighboring two streets. The form of the physical drive, the physical barrier can be, doesn't have to be concrete barrier or, you know, barricade, can be anything that just prevents the, the traffic in that direction. It could even include mini, miniature parking or gathering space that the developer has shown in picture concept. We believe this will be, not only ameliorate the parking consideration, but also boost the ambiance and the neighborhood gathering potential of that very spot, and will be beneficial for the nearby restaurants and shops as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. Our next speaker is Jeff Shavea, followed by Nick Cosla, followed by Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jeff.
Thank you, I've never heard my name pronounced that French-like. Jeff Shaver, real simple. I'm an East Estates resident for the past 31 years. I'm basically speaking a lot of the same information that Henry just spoke. My main concern is about the parking. Currently on East Estates, there are, south of Richwood, there are 35 homes, and I did a count one evening last week that there were 58 ungaraged cars. Every, all those 35 homes have two-car garages, yet there were 58 uncar, ungaraged cars, which works out to be 1.6 ungaraged cars per household. So if you look at the new development, 55 houses, people in Cupertino like to store stuff in their garage and park their cars outside of the garage in a lot of instances. So applying the 55 houses plus 10 ADUs, that's a potential, the same rate of 104 more ungaraged cars, which would flow over onto East Estates and Richwood. Plus, there, on the way over here, I counted 27 cars in the parking lot that were from the gas station, that are kind of permanent residents of that parking lot right now. The cars are permanent residents, not people. So that's another, that's a potential of 131 cars spilling over onto East Estates and Richwood. So as Henry was pointing out, my ask is for more parking from the developer, if at all possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Our next speaker is Nick Cosla, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Sunil Satner. Welcome, Nick.
I'm not sure if this was intended.
Yeah, I don't, some, some cities are required to put, some cities are not, so I'll yield my three minutes if someone else wants.
Thank you, yeah, you will get more than three minutes.
Our next speaker is Peggy Griffin, followed by Sunil Satner, followed by Prabill Bhattachara. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, I'm going to use the overhead, if I can, please. Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. I actually enjoyed reading the staff report, I liked the footnotes, I liked the links to documents that are referred to, and I liked the explanation of all these new laws that take away all the general plans. That said, I'm really disappointed that there was no mention of the contamination and the process. I think that should have been, and the documents that were missing. This is the site, and the geotracker, has it still open under remediation, which you've discussed? The letter that was mentioned by vice chair staff on October 20th of this year, Gian said that it, the staff report was already written, but 20 days later, I mean, he had 20 days to read this, and this, he was copied on this. It said, "The DEH does not agree with this statement that it will protect future occupants living in the site," so they disagree with it. So this was significant, this letter. That said, the planning commission is asked to approve a development permit and a use permit, because you have to have a use to have the residential, and you're supposed to say that it will not be detrimental to the public health and safety. How can you say that when it's like this? If you can put a clause that says that it has to be mitigated before the permit can be issued, that would be good, something, don't just say, "Yeah, yeah, everyone's going to take care of it." Put it in writing, make it legal. That said, there was no mention of public law art. This is a central intersection and area, and I hope that there's public art instead of, in Luffies. The other thing I haven't asked for is, because we're short two BMR building, sorry, we're short two moderate, and these are the, the BMR units that they're producing, can the city subsidize two? Like, just two, with the BMR funds? And put it in an agreement? The, the developer wouldn't lose the money, the city would get, there would be zero in total numbers of BMR.
Thank you, Peggy, that is your time. Our next speaker is Sunil Satner, followed by Prabell Bhattachara, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Sunil.
Thank you. My name is Sunil Satnoor, I'm a resident of Richard Drive, Cupertino resident for the last 15 years. I am concerned about the waivers that are being requested as part of this plan. I think they are a little bit excessive. The proposed plan is asking for elimination of retail on a mixed-use, mixed-use site. I have seen other proposals around Cupertino that are also going the same route, taking mixed-use parcels and zoning it only housing. If each mixed-use zone in the city is converted to purely residential, it will result in loss of retail for the city, and I know we want to be fiscally resilient as a city, and I'm very concerned about that. So I strongly encourage the city to encourage mixed-use on this property. The setback on Richwood Drive being requested, I'm a resident of Richwood Drive, is only nine feet. I think it is going to be very intrusive, kind of, kind of oppositional to the theme of like, single-family homes. Like, just imagine like, a tall building, just nine feet away from the setback. I'm personally not opposed to more housing, I welcome housing, but I request the city to work with the developers, to develop housing in a way that it's consistent with the specific plan of the city. The specific plan marks this as a mixed-use site. I'm also very worried about the overflow parking, like several of my fellow residents have spoken about. Finally, I would encourage the city to have like, a dialogue with the developers. As residents, also, we are open to having more discussions, to see how we can bring a type of development which is consistent with the specific plan of the city, which, which keeps retail, which brings in more affordable housing, is not very intrusive to the neighbors. Now, I definitely appreciate the fact that the, the developers and their whole team are here, and they're willing to work with the, the residents, I really appreciate that. So I hope we can take this opportunity to rethink. Like, I know there's a lot of, I'm late to this game, I only came to know about this development in the last, I would say, two months, I didn't know about this. But I, I hope we can take this opportunity to rethink this and build it in a way that solves the housing need for the city. Like, you know, the developers can build the houses and, and turn a profit, and bring in more affordable housing, and with like, enough parking, and the residents will also be able to, like, live, enjoy the quality of life that we have been experiencing. That's all I wanted to say, thank you.
Thank you, Sunil. Our next speaker is Prabell Bhattachara, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Prabell.
Hello, this is Prabell Bhattacharya. I'm also, like Henry and Sunil, a resident of Richwood Drive, been there for about 18 years now. And I'd like to say that definitely appreciate how this project has come about, in the sense there was a mingling session done about a month back, where there was a lot more question and answer with the, with the applicant team, and at least there were opportunity for us to express our concerns, share some of the ideas, et cetera. So that process was done well. I think in addition to the parking concerns that have been raised, extremely concerned about overflow, overflow parking, especially seeing some of the other neighborhoods where you simply cannot park on a Saturday, or a, you know, or a Friday evening when there are, like, you know, parties or other things going on in the house, social guests, social gatherings, and the streets are just overflowing, right? And, and so I think this is just going to get worse. But in addition to that, I would like to reiterate the setback concerns. I think nine feet I think nine feet that was allowed from a requirement of 62 feet is almost ridiculous. Nine feet setback, I mean, most bedrooms are wider than nine feet. And so if you think about like, the single family homes that are directly facing those properties, I mean, the construction, that nine feet setback is 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 just not acceptable, should not be acceptable. And I think city and the planning should definitely get back to the applicants and ask to reconsider. And can I have a similar concern there about the trees? I really did not understand the comment about the fact that the streets that these trees are not healthy. I'm talking about the trees that are lining Richwood Drive. These are extremely mature trees. They are beautiful. They do not look unhealthy. And they have, you know, it has taken them 20, 30, 40 years to get to this state. And every, trust me, every single tree would at some point in time create some kind of push onto the sidewalk, you know, just because how how the roots grow. And it's very disheartening to see that we will be taking these mature trees down and plant new trees, which again would create privacy concern because for those trees to get to the mature state will take another, you know, 15 to 20 years, if not more. Thank you.
Thank you, Prabha. And our next speaker is Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, good evening. I agree with previous statements, lots of retail, need for real BMR, public art, parking, privacy issues, setbacks. I really think that this meeting has been called prematurely. Adding condition seven without notice just isn't okay. Were meeting materials provided in accordance with the Brown Act? Now I'm going to do a deep dive on the pollution issues. State records show that the applicant has been not responsive to the county Department of Environmental Health, even simple and repeated requests, like at least three times for a perjury statement, simple stuff. But then there's the really tough stuff. The pollution issue looks really bad. Remediation has not commenced, and there's no agreement as to how it will be done or whether it's even economically feasible. There's a mountain of documents on the state website. And I ask you, ask yourselves whether you can, in good conscience, waive CEQA for this project. We can't have more fenced in blight in our city. There's a childcare facility within a stone's throw. My understanding is that ministerial type projects cannot have a history of of contamination. You just can't. So I don't I have to wonder whether this can even be an SB 330 project. Furthermore, it appears that this project is on the Cortez list. And any project that has is on the Cortez list has to have has to have CEQA. So I urge you to deny the CEQA exemption and to engage the services of a legal expert before exempting CEQA. And, you know, we owe it to the residents, and we also owe it to protect our city from legal action. I wound up, as you may know, I've been very involved with pollution issues in the in the city and the county also. All sorts of pollution, including getting a ordinance passed in the county for groundwater pollution. Anyway, I was at a BackMed meeting years ago on Zoom. That was so that was during COVID. There's people testifying who who lived at Bayview, generations of cancer, people dying young, people dying sick, people being sick, very sick. And it's just not worth it to be, we got to get this remediated. We got to get it right. Deny the CEQA exemption. Please. Thank you.
We have no speakers in person and no hands raised on Zoom chair.
Okay, very good. Thank you. With that, we will close public comments. Thank you to all the members of the public that spoke. I'd like to firstly ask staff to clarify if this site is on the Cortez site list.
This site is not on the Cortez list.
And when was that last checked?
This morning.
So to clarify that question from the member of the public, this site is not on the Cortez site list. Can staff comment a little bit on what are the state laws regarding parking? If you might take a little time to explain in simple terms for members of the public, what are our constraints that we're dealing with coming from the state as far as parking? And what could be the options for parking here?
Sure. And there's a few different state laws. I think the one that the applicant is exercising has to do with density bonus, which density bonus has its parking regulations are typically decoupled from the rest of municipal codes of parking standards. In this case, as stated previously in one of my slides, as well as a staff report, that we cannot if this is a qualifying density bonus project, the city cannot require anything more restricted than what's allowed in density bonus law. Going back also with AB 2097, which I still, even with the SB 330, I still believe this this project will qualify due to the timing of the submission.
If I may interrupt staff and ask you to maybe simplify it for members of the public, they may not know what is AB 2097. So if you might step back and explain the constraints that the city is dealing with on this matter.
I mean, interrupt. AB 2097 applies to residential and commercial developments. I think the only exception are hotels. So it's really just your location. And as John had said earlier, the majority of the Stevens Creek corridor is the one area in the city Cupertino where AB 2097 applies. I think it went into effect January 2023. So what it essentially says is cities cannot require parking, period, unless you're a hotel or some other project that qualifies. But commercial or residential, you cannot require parking if they are within that area of being near a stop that has the 15 minute lead times. So that's really the end of that. But I mean, this this project is also, I believe, having two parking spaces per unit, not for the ADUs, and has, I think, nine guest parking spaces. So you're looking at 119 onsite spaces, which is certainly more than we could see under another residential project.
And if you might comment a little bit further, I know historically, part of CEQA initial studies were traffic studies, and part of that may have been parking studies. Is traffic and parking a consideration in CEQA anymore as per state law? And what parking considerations could be factored in if we did not exempt CEQA?
Okay, well, I guess the the project is exempt from CEQA, as we've discussed. But parking going way back often got looked in CEQA documents. Traffic did through what was called level of service analysis, which is essentially what was the degree of delay people were experiencing on roadways? And how much was the project adding to that? That standard changed, I think, in 2017 to vehicle miles traveled, which is tied more to air quality and environmental measures where you're looking at what is the additional traffic or vehicle miles trip being added by projects? The Stevens Creek corridor is largely exempt because that is really where you want to have the vehicle trips occurring. So we we don't have impacts with VMT typically unless you're going further from a main corridor. But parking and level of service right now are no longer valid analysis items under CEQA, even if the project were subject and not exempt.
Thank you. And and just to make sure, what is the effect of cumulative projects in the area? I know we have the rise that is right opposite this project, and we have the Hanover project that is on Finch. That will be coming up soon. So how should staff be thinking about the cumulative impact of traffic or parking? And I know you commented on traffic parking not being a consideration, but if you might comment on the cumulative impact?
I mean, that's a good question because that's now more going to, are you going to have facilities available for people to actually park, either public or private areas? That would probably be something where we would need to actually study if you're assuming build out of those projects. Certainly, the Valco site has been on the radar for a lot of years with no actual development really going forward. Hanover, as you referenced, that could be a much more dense project as well. But I think the looking at physically where the parking could go would be something that the city would need to take steps to do because it can't be something that's handled through the CEQA process.
I know you say it's not something you would handle in the CEQA process, but the CEQA process is is potentially not exempt if there are cumulative impacts. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct. This this project qualifies for a categorical exemption. So there's no consideration of cumulative is something you would look at if you're doing an environmental impact report.
Okay, so we will come back to that. So can you explain for us what? And again, maybe simplifying it so the members of the public can can follow along here. What are the implications of a CEQA exemption versus not doing a CEQA exemption? Should the commissioners pass a motion to recommend to council that CEQA not be exempt? Can you talk about what is the what are the differences in those two approaches?
Well, okay, generally, and court cases have been going more in the direction, where a project is eligible for an exemption, cities need to apply that exemption. It's not something where it's optional. And in this case, the infill exemption applies to sites that are five acres or smaller. This site is that are consistent with the general plan and zoning. This site is, and they don't have any other unusual circumstances about them, which this site does not. So this is kind of a classic infill exemption. It's surrounded by development. It's already developed. So this is really a redevelopment project of a commercial center that's not been doing terribly well. And I think we're seeing interest in a lot of these projects. A number of our housing element sites are similar to this, where they're kind of underperforming or vacant commercial centers that are getting proposed for townhome development typically in this density range. But, you know, the CEQA question is really the intent of where there are exemptions that fit. Cities are supposed to be focusing on those exemptions unless they clearly do not. And in that case, you'd be doing an initial study and looking at whether you'd be doing a negative declaration or an EIR, which is the highest level of environmental analysis.
And so specifically, and I just want to play this out because a number of people have asked for CEQA not to be exempt. So I understand that there have been contamination studies that were done, and there have been testing that have been done. And now there are rebound testings that are in progress that are at a quarterly interval. What is the implication of an initial study if that were to be recommended instead of a CEQA exemption? Would that just repeat the same testing? Or would that be a different kind of testing?
If the CEQA process were to change, so for the issue to be exempt or not exempt, the conclusion, and I know Terry's on Zoom, even though I'm not paying attention to that. If you want to weigh in after I'm done, Terry, the likely conclusion, say, if you did an environmental impact report, would be that you would have a measure described in that would that would be similar or identical to the condition of approval we have on the permit right now. There's only so many things you can do with soil contamination. You either remove the soil or you remediate it the way it's currently being remediated now on site. So what that would likely entail is a lot of expense, a lot of time to get the exact same result, except that the CEQA process would have changed. So I think that's really inevitably where we would end up on this. Everyone is aware there's contamination. It's already being remediated. The county is aware of that. The county person who wrote the October 20 letter people are referencing, we have already talked to him, and he has reviewed our condition of approval. No one at the county has raised the issue that this should be should not be exempt from CEQA. So there is complete awareness and coordination between the city and the county on this. So, long story short, the process could change. The result would be identical.
Thank you. I will pause my questions. I've taken way too long. If other commissioners would like to come in, especially commissioners that have not asked anything so far. Commissioner Sharp, Commissioner Fung, if you'd like to.
I'll go, sure. So, reading up on this today, it seems that there is a statutory CEQA exemption for qualifying infill projects. But you have to mitigate the contamination. You don't get the CEQA exemption on a contaminated site that's not mitigated. So I keep hearing, oh, this this project is exempt from CEQA. But when I read the California state law, I just don't see it. The infill exemption just does not apply, and it's not exempt from CEQA. I mean, I think this is a great project. It's much better than what we would get if it was not a SP 330 project. But I just don't get why I keep hearing it's exempt from CEQA when the state law clearly says that it is not. So some other concerns that I had listening to residents, I didn't hear anything about parking for the ADU. Are there? Is there parking spaces for the ADUs? Can the applicant or somebody answer that?
I'll answer for what the city can't require, which is we can't.
Well, I know we can't require it. I'm just asking if the project plans have it.
That should be a question for the applicant, if he wants, if they're going to designate any.
So could the applicant answer, besides the garage spaces, are there parking spaces for the ADUs? And are there guest spaces as well?
My, can I, are we opening it back up? Okay, great. Thank you for the for the question. Again, we have our environmental consultant here. If you wanted to have further dialogue about the environmental condition. And just to clarify, our company builds these projects all throughout California. Very common to get an exemption because the CEQA process, just so everyone understands, is different than the actual cleanup process. And, you know, fortunately, we are redeveloping the site because if we weren't, it would never be cleaned up. So the remediation that's ongoing, that goes, that's a state process that goes through the county separate from the actual CEQA process, which I think was trying to be described. So and quite frankly, again, we've built these sites all over the place. No one's ever gotten sick. There's never been any kind of concern with that. It's fully disclosed to your question about there's disclosures in the HOA. So and again, our environmental consultant can give you talk about science that I really don't understand about how this is a relatively clean site, even though it in other states, by the way, you probably just go build right there. It's just California is very.
Even though the DEH has its orders of magnitude above.
They, if you look at every document that they write, they they write that because I think that covers them. And then there's been years of cleanup and remediation, and that will continue. And fortunately, we have a lot of money being paid to do that. So it doesn't remain contaminated, which is the alternate, is that it would it would just stay there. And again, you can look at a lot of different projects that we've built that people have been living in for years and decades. And this is very, very common, especially in the Bay Area and Southern California and in California. And again, if you want more dialogue, we have.
Can you talk about the parking? Are there ADU parking spaces?
Yeah, so state law doesn't require, in addition to the city, parking for the ADUs. And I think what we found is, well, one, we're not required to do any parking. Your specific question, we do have nine guest spaces. And the benefit of doing the side by side garages is that we weren't doing tandem garages. So people actually park in their garages, which is enforced by the HOA. And to further that point, you know, I have two teenagers that drive cars. I live in a large house that we have a big driveway. That's probably, you know, very similar to what the folks I know I've driven through the neighborhoods have. If you look at the buyer that's going to be buying a townhouse project, typically, it's not folks who live there and they have three kids. The demographics have changed dramatically, especially in this area, because it's so expensive to live. So you're going to see people not with, you know, a couple with three kids. You're going to have a couple with maybe, and I think this goes into the student generation rates. I think your schools are probably like that we generated more students, but that's just not the reality of Cupertino. And you're seeing it in your in your schools, you know, lowering because these are 2,300 square foot units. You're not getting large families in there where you have teenage drivers. Typically, by the time the kids are driving, they're they're out of the house. And they're moving hopefully to another Toll Brothers community where we do build single family houses.
Okay, so I guess your answer is there are no ADU spaces.
There aren't, no.
Okay.
In any project, there wouldn't be.
But there's nine guest spaces.
There's nine guest spaces, correct. And all the side by side garages for all the units.
So how would you require that an owner park in their garages and not on the adjoining streets?
A couple of different ways. And I think the parking situation, by the way, is with or without our project, the neighbors have expressed a lot of concern about parking in their neighborhood. I think during the daytime, I've counted, there's probably you have room for 100 spaces, and there's maybe five cars parked. At nighttime, I'm sure it's much more dramatic. But the they're ongoing parking concerns. They've talked about doing things like metering or, you know, permit parking. So this isn't an issue that's just. So this isn't an issue that's just related to our project. This is a larger issue that they've had for quite some time. You could do more speed bumps, I guess, but that's way outside my pay grade. That's something that the city council would have to, to go and do those issues.
Yeah, I know, like in Palo Alto where they approved a project with insufficient parking, they said, okay, we, we're going to do permit parking and the residents of that project will not be eligible for permits as.
They, if you would, if that's something that, if, again, I've dealt with this in my city when I was in, when I was on the planning commission of city council, we've, we've done, I've done that before where you, you, it's, you would, basically you'd hire a consultant, costs $25,000. They're going to figure out the neighborhoods that would want to take part in the program. And then you get neighbor buy-off or not, but that becomes a council decision. Public Works gets involved with it also and you're going to do traffic study, probably takes six months to a year. I encourage that the city go, the neighbors go that route if that's something they're interested in. Speed bumps can also help at least with, you know, mitigating the speed on the streets, but I don't.
There are lots of speed bumps on East Estates.
Those become, you know, sometimes you put them in and then you remove them six months later and you spend $35,000 to do the speed bump. So.
Okay.
But, but again, we, we feel we are sufficiently parked. Because one of the neighbors' concerns, and Commissioner, this gets to one of your questions, we did look to our neighbor who owns the commercial site next to us to ask if we could lease additional spaces. Because I told one of the neighbors, I promised them I would talk to that commercial, that big commercial project, the Brazilian seco and all that. And he, he, he has no interest in doing that. He's, he's very much likes his parking. But again, we are parked according to state law and we are parked far in excess, far in excess of what's required.
Okay. And then, okay, that's all I had for you. Now, to the residents that spoke in favor of blocking off Richwood and East Estates to not have through traffic, I just wonder, you know, that means you always have to go the long way around on Vicksburg or, so, but that's okay.
So the ambulance have to go the long way around?
Okay. And then the one resident spoke about the setbacks and yeah, I agree, those setbacks are ridiculously small, but unfortunately, the developer gets unlimited waivers on a density bonus project and they're taking advantage of them. I know on the Summer Hill project where it was over by Pizza Hut Staples and Fontana is the developer willingly increased the setback from the adjoining neighbors on the next street over, but that's something they voluntarily did. It was not something that the city could require, unfortunately. Yeah, so we can't mandate that. Let's see, I guess, oh, I was looking at the, a project in Saratoga recently that also had PCE contamination over on Keto Road, but they submitted the mitigation plan and approved by DEH before getting a Sequa exemption. And like, they included limitations on what could be done there. You can't have any childcare, you can't have any kind of healthcare usage. And they have vapor barriers, of course, and they also have 24/7 ventilation going to keep trying to get the vapors out of the units and up and, up into whatever. So, yeah, there are ways you can do the mitigation of the contamination, but it would be nice if it were done in accordance with, you know, Sequa and SP 330. Okay, thank you.
And just to point a clarification, when Commissioner Sharpe, you said no childcare, are you anticipating that these units might be doubling up as childcare or?
No, it's just, you know, sometimes people do, you know, in-home childcare. And I don't know, and this is a different project. I'm thinking of the one in Saratoga where that's explicitly forbidden because of the contamination.
Right, right. Okay, very good. Other questions from other commissioners? Commissioner Fung?
Sure. Maybe, maybe off on a little bit different thread. I think I probably know the answer to this, but I'm curious, I'm curious just to explore the, with regard to the, the toxic mitigation, that, you know, we are not the, we are not the body that's deciding the process or approving the process. We are, you know, obviously we're considering the application. So does that, is it safe to say that regardless of how, how the problem is addressed, that the city doesn't have liability in terms of, you know, the long-term, long-term impact from this?
The city is not and could not be the oversight agency. We're not staffed, we're not chosen by state law to do this. You typically have the Regional Water Quality Board or DTSC for higher level contaminants, generally based whether it's water or soil. And then county environmental health is, I don't know how many total applications they have on this, dry cleaners, gas stations, those are very common sites. Even a lot of our sites out here were formerly orchards. So there's pesticide residues or metals on a lot of properties. So that said, again, while the city is the permitting authority and we would be the Sequa authority, we can't delegate that. We would be the lead agency if there were a Sequa document to produce. Even if we did one, NEIR, the county would still be the oversight agency on this aspect of environmental cleanup. So that, again, that would not change.
Great, thank you. Actually, that may be the only, only question I, I had at this point.
Okay, other questions from commissioners? Okay, at this point, no other questions. I'd like to see if we can get the, I know we've spent a lot of time on Sequa, but I think this is an area that continues to sort of refuse to go away, so I just want to put it to rest if we can. Can you talk a little bit about what is the, so we've chosen Placeworks as the consultant, is that right? Is that a choice the city made or the applicant?
City.
Okay. Did Placeworks have any contact at all with the applicant? And if you want to ask the consultant to respond to that, feel free to do that. Or if you want to bring them on, I'd be happy to ask them some questions.
No direct contact that I'm aware of, but Terry, if you want to answer that question?
Yeah, hi, this is Terry. Thank you for the question. No, we have not had any contact with the applicant.
So this report was produced independent of any, any sort of input or influence from the applicant?
That's correct.
Okay. And can Placeworks comment on how many of these Sequa-type reports you may have done? If you want to pick a time period and talk about just what's your experience with this?
Well, I've been doing this for 20 years and I don't, I don't have a number of how many I've done, but it's a lot.
And, and so if you might go back for the past year or two, are there cases where you did not exempt Sequa?
Oh, yeah, we do EIRs, we do M&amp;Ds, and we do exemptions. It depends on the project.
Would you, would you clarify maybe what conditions caused you to not exempt Sequa?
Okay, so the, the way the process works is we, the Sequa requires, and I think this is something that Luke explained as well, Sequa requires us to look at any streamlining opportunities and any exemptions. That's always been a part of Sequa. But then recently, in the 2024 San Diego Hilltop case, the courts ruled that this was mandatory and they made it a little bit more clear. They kind of reminded everybody that this is the direction that we need to take with Sequa. And in that case, that was one where the, the developer had sued the lead agency because the lead agency required an EIR instead of a Sequa document. So in looking at our, as an extension of staff and as an extension of city of Cupertino, we're looking at in their best interest and your best interest to make a Sequa recommendation that is both defensible and fits as to all, as fair to all parties. And so in this case, we went with the Class 32 for the reasons that Luke explained. The Class 32 fits the project for the size and the infill and the other criteria spelled out in our Sequa memo. Since that Sequa exemption was started, the state in 20, in July or late June, came out with another exemption under Public Resource Code 21080.66, which is another exemption that this project could qualify for. And we made a decision then to continue down the path with the Class 32 instead of doing the new statutory exemption. So either one of those exemptions would apply to this project. And this project very clearly meets the criteria for an exemption under Sequa.
Okay, so there is past case precedent of applicants prevailing in a case that overturned a situation where Sequa was not exempt? Is, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And again, could you talk a little bit about if you went ahead and did do the initial study, what part of that really applies to what residents are asking for? Is there any? Given, given the earlier comment by staff that LOS does not apply, parking considerations do not apply, what, is there anything, if you went ahead with the Sequa process, that would actually help the questions that residents are asking?
Not really. Because of the, the nature of the project, it's exempt from all of the, the analysis that the, the commenters have mentioned this evening. Even without Sequa, it's exempt from that. And I, I will point out that, you know, the city does have Chapter 17.04, their standard environmental protection requirements. And those apply to all projects in the city, whether you have to do Sequa or not. And so the, the issues with the Phase 1 and going forward with the Phase 2 for hazardous materials, that would happen even if we did a different exemption on this project or if we had to do an EIR or any larger type of, like, as Luke was saying, the EIR is the, you know, the gold standard for environmental review. And if we went through that exercise, we would just have the exact same outcome as what we have with this exemption.
Okay, very good. And, and so for the remaining tests, first of all, there's a rebound testing that was scheduled for October. Do we have the results of that? And do we, so the results from the October test are not yet known. There's two tests, I believe, one in October and one in Jan, is that right?
That is correct, but we do not have the results from those.
And so between, I mean, we are in November, I assume this goes to council in December, and you do have another test in Jan. If those tests produced some findings that were material for the discussion here, how would we approach that? Would that be prevented by further approvals of building permits as in the condition of approval?
Yes, again, until the county is fully satisfied that the environmental issues are resolved, there will be no grading or building permits, nothing that would allow site disturbance to occur.
Okay, so effectively, the applicant cannot move forward until they get a clean check from the county?
Yes, a fair way to put it is you're getting the first city approvals here and then after tonight, it would really be for the applicant to make sure that the work is progressing accordingly in order to get their project constructed.
Okay. At this point, I want to check if commissioners want to take a break and come back with design questions. I know you've spent a fair bit of time on Sequa. If there's no other Sequa questions, maybe we take a, are there any last Sequa questions? Okay, I don't see any other Sequa questions. Go ahead, Vice Chair.
Just a quick clarifying question. So I'm reading about the, the Class 32 categorical exemption. And so we've done the Phase 1 and the Phase 2. And, you know, it's, it does say if the Phase 2 must demonstrate that the site has been fully remediated, and then there's the exemption. Is that, so do we, what is, what is the, you know, stipulation there around how fully mitigated the contamination must be?
Again, I'm not sure exactly where you're reading or if that's in one of the documents. It's not in the Sequa guidelines for Class 32.
Is there a need for project design plans for, for mitigation to be shown in the design plans?
Well, I guess another thing is since this project is exempt, there, there are no mitigations. Mitigations are only done where you have an impact under Sequa. So this is again, remediating the site to the satisfaction of the county, that which again, could be going through vapor intrusion, could be going through actual testing to see if those levels are below the threshold. The county, you're really getting in now the science of cleaning the site, not a Sequa process. I mean, Sequa in many ways is just, it's its own process. It's not really dealing with the science. You're having now people who are engineers looking at these levels to make sure the site is adequately cleaned. And that is not going to get issued until the county is satisfied with that and the city will be notified per our condition of approval. So there's, while they're the oversight authority, the city is not going to be unaware of what they do. We would need to bless that as well.
Thank you.
And if I may add to that, not only does the site need to clear the environmental inspections, but there is future control REC, there are institutional controls that will be put in place. The applicant and the future property management will need to allow access at any time to the county for inspections and mitigation may be required from those future ICs. Does, does Placeworks want to comment on what, what a future IC process looks like if you have expertise in that space?
I'm not sure if I understand the question, but I, I think that might be a better question for NGO, the engineer. But I wasn't, I'm not sure if I understood the question.
Thank you. We will let the geoengineer from the applicant answer. Yes, please.
Yeah, thank you. So, once the DEH is comfortable with the proposed development moving forward, it could be under a scenario which remediation has been completed and residential screening levels are met. Or it could be under a condition where vapor intrusion mitigation systems are needed, in which case an institutional, an institutional control would be set up to limit folks from interrupting the vapor intrusion mitigation systems, such as preventing folks from cutting through the slab, turning off systems, et cetera. Does that answer the question?
Yes, and so at that point, is it the role of the HOA to mitigate if any issues were found or is it the role of the individual homeowners? How does the process play out if there were issues found through the ICs?
Right, so the site will always be under the purview of the Santa Clara County DEH as long as there is a perceived issue still. So if, if the, if the site continues to exhibit concentrations beneath the slab that have, that exceed residential criteria, some sort of periodic reporting will be required to the DEH and they will require some assurance that the systems are operating as, as designed. So that could be in the form of sensors that are showing that the proper vacuum is being maintained beneath the slabs. It could be periodic monitoring. There's a lot of different ways that could be done.
Thank you. And, and just to point out, just pointing out the obvious, I guess, none of this is currently happening with that site. So there's no mitigation, there's no monitoring, there's no ongoing monitoring. And so all of this would be a change for the better for the neighborhood in terms of cleanup of that general vicinity of the site and any runoffs that may occur from that site. Is that fair?
Correct. Yeah, there's active remediation being performed in the site, which is very expensive. Often, the only way that these sites get cleaned up is if there is money available for it to be remediated. Furthermore, when the site goes to development, some of these impacted facilities, like the actual slab where some of the dry cleaning material was probably dumped or spilled, or the utilities where this material was probably dumped down a drain, those will be removed. So the remediation will continue through development. What we typically see is with sites like this, that the remediation, that the development becomes an integral part of the remediation. And so we expect that concentrations will continue to, to decline after that.
Very good, thank you. And then the other question I have here is, who is responsible for this remediation right now? Is it the, is it the tick that owns the shopping center? Has the shopping center transferred ownership to Toll Brothers or what is the state of, who owns this right now? Yeah, please.
Great, thank you, Vice Chair, or thank you, Chair. So right now, if you look at the records, the site is currently owned by not Toll Brothers. The businesses of all, they're all shut down. So there's no, I think maybe the furniture stores was either last month or the end of this month. That'll be the last remaining business. So Toll Brothers will not accept the property until the, it has been mitigated for the environmental, because we want to make sure that all of that responsibility is on the seller, not on Toll Brothers. And again, if you wanted to further talk about just the, the levels of contamination that are there compared to other sites that have been worked on throughout the Bay Area, our consultants certainly talk about that. But even though the numbers look like they're dramatic, it's actually a much, much, much cleaner site than many things that builders have worked on in the Bay Area.
Okay, very good. Very good. And on that note, I think we will...
So is this a Class 32 categorical exemption or not?
Yes, it is.
It is? Okay. So yeah, I'm just reading here, the Class 32 exemption is not available for any project that requires mitigation measures to reduce potential environmental impacts. So how does this qualify?
Could you tell me where you're reading that?
It's from the City of Los Angeles Infill Development Projects, Class 32 Categorical Exemption, Special Requirement Criteria.
I'm not sure where they got that, but from the CEQA guidelines, Section 15300.2, it lists exceptions to exemptions.
Oh, that's the one that they quote, yeah.
Subset E, hazardous waste sites, it says. A categorical exemption shall not be used for a project located on a site which is included on any list compiled pursuant to Section 65962.5 of the California Government Code. That's the Cortez list. The site's not on the Cortez.
Oh, so when it says "any list," it's only referring to Cortez list?
Cortez. And they have lists, there's, I believe, four lists that comprise the Cortez list. The site is not on that. So it probably would have been better if, when they drafted that, they called out the Cortez list by name, but that's what the Government Code section refers to.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and not to lose sight of the forest for the trees, I think what we just went through was even if you went ahead and did the initial study, you would repeat essentially similar tests. There are no groundbreaking different tests that would somehow unearth something different. And so you'd go through essentially the same process, except you have a whole bunch of other things in the initial study that really don't apply to this project. And so we'd be enriching a consultant and giving them another year to do this project without really valuing the debt service that the applicant has to pay for during that period, or valuing what the neighborhood could get out of this project. So just want to clarify that. And on that note, let's take a five-minute break. I'm assuming that our commissioners have more questions on the design and facade and setbacks and everything else. If there isn't, then we'll have a short session after the break, but we have a full house from the applicant's side waiting for questions, so I'm sure our commissioners have questions. So let's take a five-minute break. We will reconvene at 8:42. Thank you. And I want to open up to commissioners for any facade or design or other aspects of questions, but before we do that, I will ask one question first. I did drive around the neighborhood, and as far as I could tell, on the Richwood side, on the southern side of the property, there was a reasonable distance between the homes on Richwood versus the property itself. I think one of the homes was, I think, mostly aligned towards the East Estates Drive, east-facing. There were other homes that were west-facing on Richwood, so I believe there was one home on Richwood that actually directly faced this property on the southern side. So I think that there's just something to that, I just want to point out. But with that, maybe we will ask the question on setbacks. Why do we have a 62-feet setback? Is there any observation staff have on, you know, what is the relevance of the 62-feet setback? And is it common, if you can think about other applicants that we have recently heard, what sort of setbacks have we had with those projects, if you might, I mean, to test your memory here, but...
I mean, offhand, I can't name one that's meant the 62-foot setback. It's, you know, it was, it's meant, so the rear setback is, I believe, envision, this is an unusual site where you have three sides of the property along a right-of-way, correct? So the rear setback is not necessarily adjacent to a residential or budding a residential property, it's against the street. You know, having a 60-foot setback along the Richwood Drive is a little, probably a little excessive, and having something that's actually closer to 11, which is actually 11 feet, not nine feet, is probably more in line with, you know, urban design standards for this density of housing, along the street, having a nice enclosure and whatnot. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, I think so. Were there any ways that staff explored maybe a slightly larger setback? Or is there anything else, such as privacy hedges, that would help mitigate residents' concerns?
I know the applicant, along the adjoining property with the single-family home, maintained a 26-foot setback, which is probably more than what they have along that neighborhood for any adjoining, single-family homes. You know, for two single-family homes, you could be as close as five feet. They maintained a 26-foot setback, as well as adding plenty of privacy mitigation plantings, such as trees and good neighbor fences and whatnot.
If I could just jump in, I'm sorry, Chair. I was talking to the applicant, and apparently there was someone on their team that wanted to speak to the CEQA issue, which I know we've now moved on from, but if you felt it important for them to get on the record, I would like to have given them a chance. I understand their hand had been raised on Zoom, and I was not aware of that, so...
Oh, yes. Thank you. I would welcome the opportunity for the applicant's team to comment if they would like, and I'd request Madam City Clerk to advise us if members of the consultant team or the applicant team wish to speak with their hand raised on Zoom. Thank you, if you may let them.
I believe it was Alicia.
Yes. Thank you so much, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Alicia Guerra with Buckholzer.
Sorry, we're having a hard time hearing you. If you might speak up a little bit.
Sure. Sorry. Can you hear me now?
Barely. If you might get closer to the microphone and...
Okay. I'm close to the microphone and have my volume turned up. Can you hear me now?
Is there a way the video team can increase the volume in the room? Is that... I don't believe we've had a remote oral comment or a remote public comment, so this might be the first time we're testing the audio from the speakers. Perhaps the video team can raise volume on the speakers? Any chance you can increase your volume and get closer to the microphone, please?
I am, it's pretty loud. Can you hear me now? Or...
We cannot.
We cannot. Okay.
Is the video team able to increase volume any further?
We're talking about the speakers in the room?
If they can increase volume in the speakers in the chambers here.
Let's see. Can you hear me now? I have my, I have it to maximum. Okay. So sorry about that. Thank you very much. I'm Alicia Guerra with Buckholzer. I'm a CEQA attorney. I've been practicing for 25 years here, and many times this question arises as to, when do you qualify for an exemption? When do you have to do an environmental impact report? And I wanted to clarify a couple of things, because I think there might be some confusion here. So when you have an existing condition that requires mitigation, let's call it mitigation, but it's really remediation, we need to fix an existing problem, that's not an impact that needs to be evaluated under CEQA. That's not a project impact. That's an existing condition. In this case, the seller is responsible for addressing to remediate the condition of the property. So as a result, it's not, because it's not this project causing the impact, the project doesn't have to require mitigation to fix an impact it's not causing. So what that means is, in this case, when the city decided to proceed with a Class 32 exemption, they looked through all of the exceptions to the exemption to see if that triggered the requirement to then do further environmental review. And when they looked at the exceptions, and in the case of the hazardous materials concerned, they reached a determination that there wouldn't be a significant impact caused by the project, because, one, the site is not on the Cortez list, which the law says is the exception, and, two, there wasn't a significant impact caused by the project. It's being remediated under existing conditions. And so as a result, when the city went through all the other checklists, all the other items, and determined that the project qualified for the exemption, they also found that they didn't need to do further environmental review, nor did they need to identify mitigation for any impacts. And this is important, because I believe one of the commissioners asked, well, how can you have an exception, or I'm sorry, how can you apply the Class 32 exemption when you have mitigation? Well, there is no mitigation. And the city identified in its Condition Number 7, these requirements that the property is going to be remediated before there is any impact that would occur, so then there won't be an impact that needs to be mitigated. So this avoids the need for having to do further environmental review, because the project qualifies for the Class 32 exemption. Additionally, and this is also important, two other things, and then I'll stop giving a CEQA explanation here. But the second thing is, this is all based on science. It's actually based on what we call substantial evidence, and we have a bunch of technical reports that NGO prepared that had the Phase 1 environmental site assessment, that gave all of this background and said, here's how it's going to be addressed, here what the conditions are, and here's how we're going to address them, and the seller's going to address them before there's any development. In addition, we have regulatory agencies, like the County Environmental Health, and they do this all the time. They identify the way that it's going to be fixed by the seller or the party that caused the contamination. And then they give a developer, in this case residential, and Toll Brothers, as Mr. Coslight indicated, does this all the time, they record deed restrictions on the property, or what we call land use covenants. And that tells us that certain parts of the property are subject to some ongoing remediation, whether it's VIMS or some ongoing monitoring, if in fact, in this case, the county requires that. But those are all mechanisms put in place as a requirement to remediate. It's not mitigation here, because the project's not causing the impact. So again, that's why this project qualifies for the exemption, because it fits the underlying criteria, and it doesn't cause any significant impacts. And the last thing I'll say about that is, a question arose as to, are there cumulative impacts here that we should have addressed? Because again, that's an exception to the exemption that kicks you out of a Class 32 exemption. Well, again, we don't have that problem here, because the great thing is, the city already evaluated all of these cumulative impacts that you're talking about. When it did the environmental review for its general plan update, its housing element adoption, and the subsequent projects, like the heart of the city's specific plan, all of those programmatic analyses evaluated the cumulative impacts. And what's important here is, this project was included in that as part of those prior evaluations, so there wasn't a net new or incremental increase in the significance of those cumulative impacts. So again, an exception to the exemption was not triggered, which is why this project qualifies for Class 32 exemption. I just wanted to clarify that, because I feel like maybe there was a little confusion as to, how is it this project can go forward with an exemption when you have these issues? But all of these issues are addressed outside of this project causing any of those impacts. And I hope that answered your questions, and if you have any further questions, please let me know. And thank you again for letting me speak to this issue.
Okay, very good. Thank you for that detailed explanation. Are there more questions from commissioners?
Oh, yeah. I had a question for the person that just spoke. Did you mention that the seller of the property has to do the mitigation, or did I misunderstand that? Or the owner?
Yes.
Commissioner Scharf. So it's my understanding that, and I apologize, because I don't know all of the players here, but it's the underlying property owner who is responsible for addressing the remediation. And again, I don't want to call it mitigation, because they're addressing the existing contamination as an existing condition. The relationship that Toll Brothers, as the buyer, has with the seller is what I was speaking to, that as a contractual matter, Toll Brothers is not responsible for that remediation. It's the parties that were, had assumed the responsibility for doing the remediation and are consulting with the Department of Environmental Health.
Right. Because I thought the representative from Toll Brothers had stated that they already owned the property, not that they were buying it from the party that would need to do the remediation. So maybe I misunderstood that. Maybe they don't own it yet. Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah, if we may get Nick to clarify once again. If the seller is responsible for remediation and staff will not provide you grading permits and building permits until remediation is complete, are you going to have checks that will ensure that the property does not transfer to Toll Brothers until those remediations are complete?
Correct. I mean, if you hear me?
I think so.
If you do, I mean, right.
I just want to make sure it was part of the public record. Thank you. And now it's working now. Yeah, so if you look at, right now, if you go on GeoTracker, which tracks all of the environmental cleanup, Toll Brothers does not mention any of those. The applicant is currently the applicant to do all the remediation work. And then, once that occurs, Toll Brothers will take over the project. I thought I made it clear, I'm sorry, I thought I made it clear that we were not currently the owner. If you look at the deed, if you go on the county records, we're not the owner.
Is there anything staff would like to add?
No, I'm just sorry that earlier, before Alicia spoke, is I think she nailed the key of CEQA, is that CEQA looks at the impacts, if any, caused by the project. And this is clearly an existing condition. It's something that's been there well before the applicant came on board. So that's yet another reason that this is not, remediation is a separate act happening independent of your project.
It was already there. CEQA was analyzing the impact that our project is creating. This issue was already there prior to us. And we just, again, thank you for that, we just want to make sure that was part of the public record, that finite detail. So thank you.
Yeah, and I think it brings back the comment by the member of the public to defer approvals until after the remediation rebound testing has completed and shown that remediation has in fact been effective. So is there any reason we are having this hearing before Jan, when those two successive six-month rebound tests were complete?
No, I think this is actually the appropriate time where you see things like this go forward, because again, there is nothing that could be done to begin your project until you have the cleanup that has occurred.
I'd say it's not the same issue, but so we, this project will either get denied or approved. Hopefully it gets approved. Once we get approved, I can't go build it to have a structural engineer say that the buildings can support what's going there. I can't build the project until, I mean, there's, if this gets approved, which I hope it does, you're looking at years more of not just the environmental, structural engineer's going to have to come in and say, yes, all the beams can support the project for health and safety. Fire is going to have to sign off, which we've already got them to sign off, but the final document's saying, yeah, all the hydrants are working, all the water's working. So this is one of 10 or 20 different things that, after hopefully we get approved, we go through your building department. I mean, that's why development takes so long. So there's a lot more checks and balances. You know, this is kind of just the first step in a number of steps to make sure that the project is safe for all the folks who move there. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Any other questions, Commissioner Scharf? All right, good.
I have a question.
On CEQA?
Not on CEQA.
Okay, so we're going to transition out of CEQA and focus on other parts. So if commissioners have questions on anything else beyond CEQA setbacks or any other aspects? Thank you. Vice Chair?
Yes, so I really, you know, did want to see if there was a way we can accommodate the residents' ask for more parking, and I am looking at the, you know, the fire turnout diagram, and, you know, there are, I guess I have two questions. One is that there are areas of pavement that are not fully necessary for the turnout, the turning of the vehicle. I'm wondering if those could be made into additional parking spots. And then the second thought question is, for residents that own the house, do they, could they potentially park in front of their own garage? And, you know, because, you know, it's, they're not blocking anyone but themselves, and then that might help alleviate some of the parking bottleneck.
To Greg, if I may, Chair?
Yes, please.
Thank you. So to answer, so if you look at the places where you think would be great for parking, which I agree, one, there's the issue of, fire trucks have to be able to do turnouts. So this has gone, this took us probably eight months to work out all the fire requirements. So let's say, even though the fire truck will probably never come in here, they need to have free and clear access. With regards to driveways, we have an additional, I think, four sp, there's, I don't know, I can't, again... I can't, again, I need glasses, but we have an additional four parking spots that are in driveways that could be for guest parking for the folks who live there. And if I were to buy a unit in there, that's probably the one I would be if, buy if I had extra children. So you, you essentially have nine, 10, 11, 12, 13 spots. If we could find more parking on the sites, we've heard those concerns, we certainly would. And we've exhausted trying to talk to neighbors, but, you know, that's the situation we're in.
Would residents be allowed to park in front of their own garage?
Uh, they, no, they, uh, there's no, yes, for those, just those two, the two driveways that can accommodate cars, correct. But otherwise, the drive aisle is too small to park a car. And there'll be red curbs to make sure that parked cars don't come in there. Because the, again, another sign off that we need is, the fire has already preliminary signed off on this, but they need to have clear access for the fire trucks.
Okay, sorry. And where are the extra parking, the three or four parking spots that you mentioned?
Uh, okay, if you look at East Estates, look at the unit to the way left, there's a L shape, or a candy cane kind of?
Uh, yes, I see it.
So there's there. And then if you look across the street, we have another parcel that could accommodate parking.
Got it, thank you.
Is there a way the applicant can project? Can they put it up on that?
Oh yeah. Am I need Rob for this?
Okay, there we go. Yep.
See that? Yeah, so, can you see my hand too? That was great. Uh, so we've got this space right here, and then we've got these parking spaces here. So we've got a few. So we've got this space here, we've got these two spaces here, and then we've got these two spaces here. So it's an additional six spaces.
And, and are those parking spots or what?
They're driveways. So if, to answer the question, could people park in their driveways, those units could have parking access, but there isn't space on the other, the drive, the drive, the drive aisles, the driveways are just too small. It's a good question though.
Can I ask a question of staff? Is on-street parking allowed on East Estates Drive and on Richwood Drive?
I, I believe so.
So as I'm looking at Richwood Drive, it looks like, if I go back to the map, most of, most of it does not have, does not face the house. The 10129 Estates Drive, it's, it basically faces their, their side fence. So on the opposite, on the north side of the street, that looks like it could easily accommodate like 15 cars. I'm just eyeballing it. And then, and probably another 10 on the south side of, of the drive without getting in front of any residential home there. And then on East Estates Drive, it's all commercial, right? And so this parking, did you do any count of how much parking that could accommodate between those two areas?
I mean, when, when we analyze sites, we typically don't include, you know, the parking space in the right of way. We try to just focus on what's on the, on the private property. But, I mean, to your point, I don't believe there's any 24-hour restrictions on overnight parking or permit parking in that neighborhood. So, I mean, to, again, to your point, that those, that right of way could be used, utilized by those potential future residents of that development.
Great, thank you. I mean, I'm just eyeballing it, but it looks like close to 50 parking spaces, maybe more. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I second that. Basically, I drove by the area and you're right, the southern side of Richwood that is facing the property, there's one home that's directly overlooking this, but the other one is sort of looking at East, East Estates Drive. So there is a little discretion there. On the portion that's commercial on East Estates Drive, you know, there are two restaurants, Grandma's Kitchen, Red Hot Pork, they get a little bit of parking. But yes, I mean, there is plenty of parking in that, in that area. I mean, it's what it is. And we had just approved Westport with no parking for the underground garage, so.
Okay, moving back to other questions from commissioners? Any discussion items from commissioners? I didn't hear any feedback on the facade and setbacks.
Well, I mean, honestly, I just want to commend the, the developer. This is actually very thoughtfully done, and I applaud you guys for, for, it's actually a pretty nice development. I like that you've tried to put in a lot of trees. I looked at the trees on Richwood Drive. I think most of them are Chinese pistachios, which I personally can't stand. So, you know, I, I'm happy to see those go and they don't belong in, you know, it's like, and they're not climate appropriate, they're not adapted for future climate change in our city. So getting rid of those, I'm totally in favor of. So yay, new trees. So thank you for that. And, I mean, the fact that you stayed below the 25 unit density, you could have gone to 65, you could have gone to 80, you could have gone north of that if you had done a builder's remedy project, you could have gone to, you know, 100-foot towers if you had chosen to. But you chose not to. And you've, you've created a development that's actually, will fit very nicely in the neighborhood. You've tried to be thoughtful, you've provided more parking than you needed to. You've made sure there were two parallel parking in every house, which I think is, is, is great. So, no, I think this is, this is very well done and very thoughtful, so, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
I can probably comment, I think, for summarizing. So, so I'll actually say that, you know, I think in the, developing the housing element, there was a, you know, a very genuine effort to try to address, you know, where, where can we build and what can we build with, with greater density and less impact? So I'm a little disappointed that, that there's not more happening here. But on the other hand, you know, the reality is, you know, if you had, if you had even just said, you know, I just want to build four, four stories of apartments, I don't think you could get the money to do it these days. So, of course, the product you built is, is the product that gets, you know, the housing that gets built is better than the housing that doesn't get built. So I, I would also commend, I, I think that the design, the design looks great within, within the bounds of what you're trying, you know, what you're trying to accomplish. I think that, you know, it, it will definitely be a benefit for hundreds of people, you know, in, in that particular location. You know, I think we'll be fortunate, you know, some of those people really will be riding their bikes, you know, to, you know, to their office very nearby. And I, I thought, you know, I, coming into this, of course, I was, I think everybody was aware that there was going to be discussion about the, about the contamination issue. I, I would just say kind of from a, as a, you know, from a common sense standpoint, I'd say, you know, this, this was a, you know, it's a small commercial site, not a, you know, not an industrial, you know, this wasn't a plastics factory, it wasn't a cement plant, you know, a, a cement quarry. So I think that, you know, it would be my hope that, that there would be a reasonable mechanism through which the problem could be mitigated and really made safe, genuinely made safe. I feel like there's been a good faith effort to try to address that. You know, so, and, and then I think the most important part, of course, is that it doesn't matter what, from a common sense point, it doesn't matter what I think. I feel that, you know, there's been good due diligence here, you know, on the part of the regulating bodies and on the part of the engineering team here to come up with a good solution. So, you know, I think it'd be great. So I, I'm supportive of this, of this plan as well. Again, if we, because, because there are not a lot of locations on Stevens Creek where, where we could have built with maybe a little more density, I think it'd be, I think it's a little bit of a loss, you know. Even, I think in the past, we've, we've often talked about if it were apartments versus, versus individual homes, then that would mean that you could revisit that decision down the line, you know, 20, 25, 30 years from now. But at the same time, whenever we have that discussion, I think everybody feels, you know, I think that for the people who are guiding the decision-making here, homeownership is really important. Having that opportunity is really important. And, and in that respect, it's a trade-off that's worth, worth making. So thank you very much for a good project.
Commissioner Scharf, any comments?
No, you know, other than the remediation needed, I think this project is about the best we could hope for. And I do see all over the South Bay area, these developers that have built these high-density apartment complexes, and I see them near, near the Costco on Coleman, and I see them in downtown San Jose, is they're just having a terrible time renting them out. They're offering these huge incentives to try to get people to sign a lease. There's just, the market for that high-density housing, you know, as I'm sure Toll Brothers knows, is just, you know, not there in townhouses or what. Everybody seems to want to build right now in Cupertino because, like David said, you know, homeownership is so important, not a lot of land left for any more single-family homes. So I do appreciate that this project, you know, took advantage of being submitted before our housing element was approved, so they are able to build at a reasonable density rather than, yeah, they could, even now, they could build much higher, but there's just no, you know, no reason to do so. It's just not, not profitable in this area. So yeah, I think it's, other than the SEQA issues, I think this is a, a good, about as good of a project as we could hope for. One disappointment, you know, and a resident mentioned this, you know, what happened to Heart of the City and retail? Well, you know, the state says unlimited waivers, and one of the waivers is not doing the retail. So it's unfortunate, but that's the way it is. Plenty of other retail, you know, in that nearby area over at Marketplace. So yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess my comments on this project are, I'm going to agree with those who have spoken so far. I think the nice thing is this project is very synergistic with the adjacent retail, and I think it's, you know, I've read through the feedback submitted by the owner of Cupertino Marketplace, and it, I see the support and I, I see the, how this could be, you know, really helpful for the local businesses. So that's great. And also, another nice thing, I, I did knock on a few doors that were adjacent to this project, and I don't, I didn't get everyone to open the door, but those that had actually were aware of this public hearing. And so I think the community has been noticed, and as you can see by this evening, people did show up. So the word did seem to get properly communicated this time around. I, I was a little bit on the retail front. It was unfortunate, we had, I discussed with the developer whether or not we could do any relocation assistance for the retailer, and I was a little disappointed to find that they had actually already moved back in July. So I suppose in the future, just a note for us as a city, when, when retailers become aware that their property is being redeveloped, I think for me personally, it's less critical that the retail stays in that exact space. But if it could relocate to somewhere within Cupertino, that would be good because this particular restaurant left to San Jose. So would be nice to keep them in the city. But otherwise, you know, and I guess it would have been nice to be able to accommodate the resident parking needs. It doesn't seem to be easily doable within this map. But I also agree that, you know, East Estates Drive is an acceptable alternative for the near term. But yeah, so thank you for, I think this, ultimately, this project will be very additive to the city, and you've done it in a way that does sort of graduate from single-family out to, you know, the Stevens Creek area.
So I just want to add one quick thing. We are an aging city. I am concerned about our seniors. So I think one of the, the members of the, the community had said something about four sets of stairs is a lot, and I agree with that. And I, I know this is, you know, beyond the scope of the conversation we've had so far, but if that's something that you guys can look at and maybe, you know, identify a space if the, the homeowner wants to be able to put in a lift, you know, like, and just kind of accommodate that in the design in some way. So that's an option if the, the homeowner has the need to put that in to accommodate their mobility issues. Thanks.
Commissioner Scharf?
So one of the residents mentioned closing off East Estates in Rid, uh, Richwood, so cars could not travel up there from this development. And I see in several other places in Cupertino where they've done something like this. I know Forest Avenue over near Lawson Middle School, they've done that. So how does that come about when you make a decision? And also on, I think on Kim over in your Home Depot, how does that come about when you decide? Is that something the residents have to lobby for, or how does that work?
I'm not quite 100% versed on the process, but I, I believe there is a resident petition and a certain amount of the residents have to be part of the application through Public Works to close that street. And, and it does go to council too.
Oh, and I was going to mention, so I grew up in Florida, in a city where there are a lot of seniors. And I did visit someone who lived in a townhome with three levels, and they actually built all of them with elevators built in. Yeah, I know, that's probably not something you ever see around here, but yeah, it would be nice to have a design where an elevator or a stair lift could be accommodated.
I, I will observe that the recently built Allen Townhomes, that is actually occupied by the applicant themselves, the applicant built it with the elevator for their own unit. So I want to, I want to observe the net, the no-net loss finding says the remaining sites in the housing element inventory are inadequate to meet the requirements. Does that account for the pipeline units?
Yes, that takes into account the housing element. You're essentially just dealing with housing element sites. So we would say towards our arena, if we have a site that's not a housing element site that adds 100 units, we get that credit. But the tracking for no-net loss is focused just on the 58 housing element properties. So we've had a couple others come in, and there were similar sites like this that had applications that locked in lower density before. So in the case of this project, and I know that we have the table in there that's a little more complicated than it needs to be, the middle column is addressing moderate income, which moderate and median are lumped together in this. So if you're between 80 and 120% of the median income, this site had a very high expectation for moderate income units, 93 of the 163 projected. So over half were anticipated to be moderate. The applicant is meeting our BMR requirement, 20%. And this is kind of the common flaw of going through the housing element process, that if you can only require 15 or 20%, how are you going to get 57% to be either moderate or low? And this is a common issue with housing elements throughout the state. So this project, because we had a surplus of just 80 units in the moderate category, and I can say is, we're, we're well over in market rate housing, over 1,000 units. Low and moderate, we knew we were going to be close anyway. We also lost four housing element sites right leading up to certification, which were seen as high in the low and moderate. So that made the margin slimmer. Since we're getting 11 and we were expecting 93, there's a shortage of 82. Our current surplus was just 80. So that puts us two units below. So we're going to need to look into this issue, which does involve accounting for no-net loss. You typically have six months to address this. The common ways to address it would be further upzone already existing housing element sites, or find additional housing element sites that could offset this loss. I mean, I realize this is largely a paper exercise, but this is what you go through. You're tracking just what's in the housing element. We're not a lot over in the low-income category as well. So the low and mod, this is something we're going to need to revisit. And we need to account for this when we approve development on housing element sites. So that's why the table is there. There may be other options to sort of offset this because we have a number of housing development projects that are actually on file now that are not housing element sites. Presumably, they will be providing 20% moderate income units as well. But this is a conversation, again, the housing ele, housing element involves HCD, so we would need to have that conversation with them to see how we could account for those projects, since those are now definable in our active applications.
And so if you were to find a way to close this gap of two, that conversation need not go to HCD?
They would still need to look at it because, once approved by the city council, we have now taken an active step towards approving a project on this housing element site, and that is now essentially resulting in this loss, even though it may not be built for some time. So it's the point of approval by city council is where you've now made a decision about a housing element site that's different from what you said in the housing element, which is always the best estimate at that time. Because this was in the 68 element, which is always the best estimate at that time. Because this was in the 65 to 80 category, we foresaw a higher level of affordability. That's really the way HCD works, is affordability is tied to density, even though in the real world, that doesn't happen. Again, we're seldom, unless we get an affordable housing project, going to exceed what our BMR requirements allow. So, 20% is really the best we can hope for in projects.
And, and I'm counting in the stable 55 units, so the ADUs don't count as separate units?
We get credit for them towards meeting arena, but we're, because they're not recognized as new independent units in the housing element, that's not something we can take credit for here. Typically, ADUs are accounted, I think it's like a 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 in each income category. So, when we do the annual report, which will be coming to Planning Commission late March, early April, that's how ADUs are accounted for. If you had 10, you would spread them out evenly on the assumption that they're affordable by design. So, we do get credit there. This is really not a conversation we've had, because this project is the first one putting us in this realm. And again, this is, this is not unique to Cupertino. You know, I think this came up often in the housing element process. Our arena is 4588. We upzoned to over 5,800 and something, which seemed like we really overshot. We did in the market rate category, we did not in the low and moderate. And that's really where it's difficult for all cities to meet, is at those income levels.
Okay, very good. So, on that note, I'm gonna move the staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, that went quick. Any friendly amendments? Nobody? Okay, I'll take that, too.
I wanted to move just so that I could do it as, as presented.
Okay. Are there any amendments that staff, based on the discussion we've had, you know, given all of the discussion around trees and everything else, do we need to factor in anything about the trees into an amended motion?
I think the only modification was what, was the one recommended by DEH in the, in the presentation, so.
Can you say that again?
Oh, so, Condition, Condition 7, the draft DP resolution, with the modifications from DEH for that one condition of approval for the site remediation. So, that was the only modification from the...
Okay. Okay, very good. If I have no other offers of friendly amendments, looking around the slides, all right, then we're gonna vote Madam City Clerk. We're moving the staff recommendation.
It did great. I think everybody did. I'm sorry Terry had to sit through it, but I didn't, I didn't want her to have to do that.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. I want to congratulate Troubadours. It's your first site in Cupertino, but hopefully not the last. And we look forward to seeing quality projects that bring in quality residents. And let's hope that that is a clean project and everything else goes smooth. Thank you for your time here today. Okay, so, with that, we are gonna move on and close this public hearing, but we still have agenda items. So, we have no old business, no new business. So, moving on to staff and commission reports. Any staff reports from John or Luke?
No, none at this time, but I owe you all an email for the Planning Commission Academy in March, because the registration will start in December. So, I will get that out.
Can we make it easy on you and just ask commissioners right here if everybody's interested?
I believe there is budget for all.
Say that again?
I believe there is budget for all.
Okay. So, okay, all right. We'll let commissioners respond to you when you send your email. All right, very good. No staff reports, any commission reports? Okay, no commission reports. Future agenda setting. Is there any future agenda that staff would like to share? Any more public hearings coming up?
There is in December, because I believe the next, the Planning Commission before the Thanksgiving was canceled, I think, when you voted in February, that this is the only Planning Commission this month. There is, I believe, a dividend homes project on Stevens Creek in December. I'm not sure, the first, first meeting date in December, since there's only one Planning Commission then.
Okay. So, we did cancel the one before Thanksgiving?
I believe that was voted on, I believe in February, that the, both the December and November meetings were canceled at that time, because they're coinciding with the holidays.
Okay. And so, first week of December dividend. I know there's a couple of different sites that they have, right? So, which one would this be? Are they coming up together? Okay, very good. Okay, no staff and commission reports, future agenda setting. Any, anything from commissioners on future agendas? Okay. Nothing else? If not, we're adjourned. Thank you very much.